One.
Good afternoon, welcome to the December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two Board of County Commissioners's Comprehensive Plan Workshop. Before we get started, just a little housekeeping here, I'm having a little trouble with my computer audio, so I'm visually on the on the laptop, but I'm calling in through the through the phone, so hopefully we can have a have a seamless meeting here nevertheless. With that, I'm gonna go ahead and turn things over to Michelle Leinhart for the introduction.
Sir, thank you Commissioner Hagan. Good afternoon Commissioners, for the record, I'm Melissa Leinhart with Planning Commission Staff. Thank you for being with us today for this workshop on Comprehensive Plan Amendments that are part of the October two thousand twenty-two cycle of Plan Amendments. On tonight's agenda, I'm sorry, today's agenda, we have six map amendments. All of the items are scheduled for public hearing next year in January on the twenty-sixth. And Planning Commission Staff members assigned to each item will be giving a brief overview of the request. This is a workshop for commentary outside of the public hearing process. This is a time for Planning Commission Staff to explain and provide insight into the request. There will also be time for Commissioner questions during each item. At this point in the process, staff is still gathering information and analyzing the requests. There will be no consistency findings made today. All of the items today are proposed changes to the future land use map, which sets the allowable densities and intensities that can be considered for all areas of unincorporated Hillsborough County. And with that, I will ask Ms. Carla Yanos to present the first item on the agenda, item A one.
Point of order, should we just do a roll call first?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I think we definitely showed Commissioner Kemp. Can we, can a clerk have a roll call vote, please?
Good afternoon. Here. Cameron Sepita? Cohen?
Here.
Hey.
Something not working for your workshop, I'm watching right now.
Yeah, I don't have any audio. Can you call me and let them know I have no audio?
Cam?
Here.
I see Commissioner Myers is here. Commissioner Myers, can you hear me? Owen? And Wostel?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, please continue.
Good afternoon Commissioners, this is Carla Yanos with Planning Commission Staff. I will be sharing my screen real quick. All right, please confirm you can see, you can see my PowerPoint?
Yes.
This is Plan Amendment twenty-two dash thirteen, also known as sixty-three fifty-nine County Road five seventy-nine. This plan amendment is located in the middle of the October two thousand twenty-two Plan Amendment Cycle. This property is located within the limits of the Tassasa Community and within the rural service area. It is located at sixty-three fifty-nine County Road five seventy-nine, which is east of County Road five seventy-nine and south of Pruitt Road in unincorporated Hillsborough County. The request is for a privately initiated Comprehensive Plan Amendment on six point one-six acres to change the future land use designation from residential four to light industrial plan. On this slide, you have a two thousand twenty-two aerial photograph with the surrounding uses labeled. The property is located in an area with light and heavy industrial. It also has light commercial, public quasi-public institutional uses as predominant uses, and there are small pockets of agricultural and residential nearby. Subject property is currently vacant, but to the north, northeast, west, and northwest is single-family residences. To southeast is public institutional use, and to the south is a small mobile home park, followed by light industrial use. Now, immediately to the southwest is a heavy industrial use as well. The property has an adopted future land use designation of residential four, which typically allows residential suburban-scale neighborhood commercial uses, offices, and multipurpose projects. Now, the subject site is surrounded by residential four future land use, the northwest, northwest, and southwest. You do find light industrial planned future land use category, which is to the south, and public, public quasi-public is found to the east. Now, the proposed future land use category is light industrial plan, which does not allow any residential, but it does allow light industrial uses such as processing, manufacturing, recycling, and storage of materials as predominant uses. Now, you do have some supporting uses such as support offices or a warehouse and rural-scale retail uses as well. Now, here on the screen, we have the maximum potential impacts per the adopted and proposed future land use categories. The adopted residential for future land use category allows a standard density of four dwelling units to the acre, or zero point two-five floor area ratio. This typically would allow the property to have twenty-four dwelling units or sixty-seven thousand square feet of non-residential use. Now, the proposed light industrial plan future land use category does not produce any residential density, but it does allow for a non-residential floor area ratio of zero point seventy-five. This means that the property would allow for two hundred and one thousand approximate square feet of non-residential use. So, in summary, the proposed change would actually add non-residential intensity, but eliminates the residential density. It does introduce the possibility of light industrial uses such as processing, manufacturing, recycling, and storage of materials. This plan amendment is still under review currently, and a detailed staff report will be provided to you before the next public hearing. It's anticipated to go to the Planning, the Planning Commission Board for public hearing on January ninth of next year, and a final adoption date before your Board, Board of County Commissioners, on January twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three. Now, I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Do we have any board member questions, comments? If not, we'll move to A two CPA twenty-two seventeen.
Good afternoon Commissioners, let me just share my screen. Everyone see my presentation?
Yes.
Okay, great, thanks. My name is Jillian Massey with your Planning Commission Staff, and I'll be presenting a briefing on HC CPA twenty-two dash seventeen, which is West Hillsborough Avenue and Racetrack Road. This plan amendment was continued from the July two thousand twenty-two Plan Amendment Cycle. It's located on the western side of unincorporated county, on West Hillsborough Avenue, east of Racetrack Road. This is an aerial photo of the site, as you can see outlined in red on the, on the north side of West Hillsborough Avenue. Directly to the west is classified as heavy industrial with a storage building on that site, and the parcel to the east is classified as commercial land. The subject site is mainly surrounded by other The subject site is mainly surrounded by other light commercial and light industrial uses to the north, east, and west on that side of West Hillsborough Avenue, as well as some agricultural, mobile home parks, and single-family developments on the south side of West Hillsborough Avenue. Some background on this plan amendment is that it's privately initiated, located on approximately four point five-six acres. It's in the urban service area and within the limits of the northwest and town and country community plans. And this site is located entirely in the coastal high hazard area. This is the adopted future land use map for the subject site, which is currently designated as light industrial. There is one parcel directly to the west that's designated as regional mixed use thirty-five. However, surrounding the site along the north side of West Hillsborough Avenue corridor is mainly designated as light industrial. Along West Hillsborough Avenue to the south is designated as office commercial twenty, and further away from the site, both, both to the north and south is designated as residential four. And the proposal before you is to change the subject site from light industrial to regional mixed use thirty-five, which allows for residential, regional-scale retail, commercial, office, and business park uses, research corporate park uses, and light industrial uses. This slide outlines the potential impacts of the proposed map amendment. It would allow for an increase in residential density and an increase in commercial intensity. So, currently, there's no residential permitted in the light industrial land use category, and the change would allow for up to thirty-five dwelling units per acre, which would allow a maximum potential of a hundred and fifty-nine dwelling units. In addition, the non-residential development potential goes from point seven-five FAR to a two-point-zero FAR. So, as you can, as you can see from the table, it would go from approximately a hundred and fifty thousand square feet to almost four hundred thousand square feet of non-residential development potential. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, thank you.
Commissioner Cohen?
Yeah, quick question. Are these going to have companion zonings along with them? When we see them in January, are we gonna be seeing them all by themselves?
This potential, this particular application is coming on its own. I believe that the Board would have to request a companion rezoning, but this particular one is not coming along with a rezoning case as far as
You know, I just think, given the history, there, there's some history with this parcel having been in front of the Board before due to issues in the coastal high hazard area. And I, I, I just, my sense is that it may be hard for us to take this up without a companion rezoning. I'll leave it to the others to weigh in on that. I, I, the next one, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, the next one, when we get to A three, I'm gonna make the same comment. I just think some of these requests, if you don't see what they actually wanna do, it's very difficult to act on the first half of it without knowing what the other half of it is gonna be.
And I couldn't, I couldn't agree more with that Commissioner. That makes a lot of sense to me, and also just the fact that we're getting rid of all of our light industrial all around Hillsborough County, so we gotta be careful with it. But I, I really, I, I would agree with Commissioner Cohen on that.
And Commissioner Owen, can you push your little button when you wanna speak? Commissioner Wostel was actually at net.
Sorry about that.
No problem. One question, I don't know if this is for Adam, or I don't know what attorney is on here, but I know typically, we do not take action during workshops, although we are perceived allowed to. However, since we do not have a in-person quorum, I'm assuming that we're unable to take official action now anyway, so is that the case? And if so, can we give direction or give any type of, anything we can do shy of that for, for the applicant? Oh, I see now.
That is, Commissioner, that is, that is correct. Commissioner, regarding the status of this workshop, it is the case that the Board is unable to take action in this virtual workshop.
Miss, can we give any type of direction as far as requesting that or suggesting that that would be a good idea? And Adam, did, Adam, did you wanna weigh in this also?
Yes, Commissioner, I'll say that there have been instances in the past where we've taken the Board's comments without a, a motion as taken as an indication that the Board would like to see the two travel together, and we've had some come back to the Board with that sort of consensus without an actual motion being, being taken. So, I think that's a, a, an opportunity that's available today. If, if there is a general consensus that, that, that would be helpful, that, that'd be sufficient for us to, to, to be able to structure those coming together with the one board meeting.
Right. Well, I know in recent years, we've, we've gone in that, gone in that direction. I think it was Commissioner White actually that pushed hard for that in years past, that on situations like this, that it, that it made the most sense to give the neighborhood and community, as well as the, the, this Board additional comfort of, of what would happen going forward. But Commissioner Wostel, you're, you're next in queue.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I agree with what Commissioner Cohen is saying. And additionally, is, well, one, is it, is it typical for us to, it looks like this is completely surrounded by commercial, so is it a typical move for us to rezone industrial in the middle of other commercial to residential mixed use? And ultimately, could this property be predominantly residential? And then, well, because it has a, a small tangy amount of mixed use in it, even though in reality, it's just us plotting a bunch of residential in the middle of commercial? I mean, is that a, a usual thing, and is that a possible outcome if, if it moves forward?
I, I can help to answer that. What was the question about the use allowed in the future land use categories?
Is it, it, well, one, is it, is it typical for us to change light industrial right in the middle of, it looks like, just a ton of other only commercial use? Is it typical for us to be changing that into a large residential use plot of land? Because it looks like it's completely surrounded by commercial. It, the map is gone. So, I'm asking, is that a normal procedure that we've done around the county is to change and put in a lot of residential in the middle of a bunch of commercial? Is that a normal thing?
That's a great question. I would say that because this is a privately initiated request, the applicant really, can really ask for any future land use map designation that's available within the Comprehensive Plan. This is the request that they are seeking, you know, individually, just per this request. But as far as it being typical or not, the regional mixed use designation is, is not a very, I would say, it's not in a lot of locations in unincorporated Hillsborough County. It's one of our most intensive future land use categories, so that's the category that you see like around the Brandon Mall, or you see up by University Mall, there, there, you see the RMU thirty-five. It does have quite a bit of intensity and density associated with it.
Okay, so it just might be that it's not typical for, I mean, I drive that route every single day, twice, two times a day sometimes. So, I'm just, okay, so you, you don't know if it's typical or not to be done?
I would say that's not a very popular plan category in general. We don't have a lot of the RMU thirty-five within unincorporated Hillsborough County. They're mostly at the more of the job centers and, you know, more, just generally more intensive areas, so it is not a popular request, no.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other board member questions or comments? If not, Adam, can you take that direction that the Board's given as far as wanting the companion rezoning?
Yes, sir, I take that as, as, as consensus from the Board and, and the kind of feedback that, that we, we're trying to get from these workshops as to what would be helpful for the Board in considering these, these amendments. So, yes, we'll, we'll take this, this, this indication from the Board and proceed accordingly.
Okay, Commissioner Cohen, you good with that?
Absolutely, and I, and just I'll, for the sake of time, let you know that I would make the same request when we get to A three.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
A three CPA twenty-two eighteen?
Thank you Carla Yanos of Planning Commission Staff again. Let me share my screen. Please confirm you see the screen?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
This is Plan Amendment twenty-two dash eighteen Sims Road and East Bay Road. This plan amendment is located in the South County area. It's just before the southernmost plan amendment for the October two thousand twenty-two cycle. This property is located in the Gibsonton Community Plan, and it's within the urban service area. Now, the approximate location of the site is west of Interstate seventy-five and East Bay Road. It's north of Sims Road and east of Cujo Lane and south of Honeywell Road in unincorporated Hillsborough County. Now, this is the privately initiated Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment on eight point four-zero acres, and it's to change the future land use designation from residential nine and six to residential twenty. Now, on your screen, you have a two thousand twenty-two aerial with the surrounding uses, and the area is generally composed of single-family use. There are public quasi-public use nearby. However, the property is currently like half vacant and half of it is single-family. It is completely surrounded by single-family use, and typical densities within this area reach up to six dwelling units to the acre. Now, here we have the adopted future land use designation for the property, which is residential six and nine. Typically, uses in the res six are residential suburban-scale neighborhood, commercial, office uses, multipurpose projects, and mixed-use developments. Residential nine allows for the same type of uses, but it's more on an urban scale, so it's a little bit more intense. The property is surrounded by res six and suburban mixed use six future land use category. Both categories allow a maximum of six dwelling units to the acre. The proposed future land use is residential twenty, and typical uses are residential neighborhood, commercial, office uses, mixed-use developments, et cetera. The density here for this category is twenty dwelling units to the acre. Now, if you look on your screen, and you're in large maps that you'll get in your packets, we don't have any residential twenty within proximity to the site. Now, for the impacts. Here, again, we have the adopted and proposed future land use impacts. So, under the existing category, you have the res six gives you a standard density of six dwelling units to the acre. It also produces zero point two-five floor area ratio, and the res nine gives you nine dwelling units to the acre and zero point five-zero floor area ratio. Now, if you combine that under, you know, the maximum intensities, it would allow you to have sixty-two dwelling units on this property, or a hundred and thirty-three thousand square feet of non-residential use. Now, under the proposed residential twenty future land use category, it's allowed, again, twenty dwelling units to the acre and zero point seventy-five floor area ratio. Now, you have that up, that comes out to about a hundred and sixty-eight dwelling units or two hundred and seventy-four thousand square feet of non-residential use. So, it's a significant increase. In summary, those proposed changes will, they will add additional density and intensity, and it, as well, it's, it's gonna introduce the possibility of higher density multifamily use. And again, this plan amendment is going before the Planning Commission Board on January ninth, and before your Board on January twenty-sixth or file adoption. I will be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Commissioner?
And, and I would just echo Board's support from me to support Commissioner Cohen, what he just stated about this, there being a companion rezoning. I think this one, me and Commissioner Myers' district kinda move upright, up against each other, so I'm gonna always try to do my best to listen to the Commissioner whose district it is. But, but yeah, I, I, I guess I'm, I'm curious, are, are there affordable housing components to this one? Or what, what, what is this? Just gonna be a standard apartment complex, or what? Give, give me just some little basics on it real quick, if you don't mind.
Correct. The full details of the rezoning application are still under review. That, I can pull up the date, but they did submit a rezoning application. I believe that's going in January as well, or February, and I'll pull the dates.
If I could just comment on the, on the rezoning, there is a pending rezoning, but it is not tied to or contingent on this rezoning. There, there is a separate modification that's been filed on this property that would be an alternate path in the event that the plan amendment weren't approved. So, I believe that the amendment that would be, I, I'm sorry, the rezoning that would be partnered with this Comprehensive Plan Amendment request is still, is still outstanding. We, we don't have that in-house yet.
Okay, thank you. And when will we have that? When will I have the ability to look at that?
I, I, I believe, Commissioner, that the, the applicant is, is ready to file in the near future, I, I believe. So, I believe that there would not be a, a significant gap between consensus from the Board to have them companions items and, and the applicant being in a position to, to file that or to modify the application they have currently filed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Myers?
Yes, presenter said the max will be a hundred and sixty-eight units, if it's staying the way it is now. For this particular property.
Yeah, so there, it becomes to, they're gonna be adding about a hundred and six units to the existing future land use category. So, yes, it totals out to a hundred and sixty-eight dwelling units and two hundred and seventy-four thousand square feet of non-residential.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so although the zoning has been filed, it's not, it's considered a companion rezoning, and, but we're gonna give the same direction as we did with the, with the previous one. Is that accurate?
Certainly, but that would be my preference, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, any, any Board comments or disagreement, anyone have a problem with that? If not, well, we'll give the same direction to, to staff. Okay, I don't see any other comments, so, thank you. With that, A four CPA twenty-two nineteen?
Hello again, I will just share my screen one moment. Can you all see my presentation and hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Again, this is Jillian Massey with your Planning Commission Staff, and I'll be presenting a briefing on HC CPA twenty-two dash nineteen, which is Citrus Park Lane and Easy Street. This plan amendment is part of the October two thousand twenty-two cycle. It's in the northwest part of unincorporated Hillsborough County. It's south of Citrus Park Drive between Citrus Park Lane and Easy Street. This is a privately initiated map amendment. There are seven folios involved, and it totals approximately eight point one-eight acres. These parcels are in the urban service area and within the limits of the Northwest Hillsborough Community Plan. Again, the, the site's located south of Citrus Park Drive between Easy Street, which is a privately-owned street, and Citrus Park Lane. Surrounding uses are mainly light commercial uses, including the Citrus Park Mall and shopping centers to the west and northwest, the Veterans Expressway, and the Upper Tampa Bay Trail to the east. There are office buildings and a hotel directly to the south, and directly north is McDonald's. Residential uses extend outside the periphery of the commercial uses that surround the site. This is the adopted future land use map for the subject site, which is currently designated as residential nine. It's mainly surrounded by urban mixed use twenty to the west, Citrus Park Village to the north, residential nine to the east, and residential four and residential six further east. Further west is residential twenty. The proposal before you is to change the subject site from residential nine to urban mixed use twenty, which allows residential, regional-scale commercial uses such as a mall, office, and business park uses, research corporate park uses, light industrial, multipurpose, and clustered residential and/or mixed-use projects. This slide outlines the potential impacts of the proposed map amendment. It would allow for an increase in residential density and an increase in commercial intensity. As you can see from this table, the allowable density would increase from a potential nine dwelling units per acre to, to twenty dwelling units per acre, and the non-residential intensity would increase from a potential point five FAR or a hundred and seventy-five thousand square feet, whichever is less, to a potential FAR of one point zero. If changed to the urban mixed use category, additional uses such as regional-scale commercial and light industrial uses could be considered. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, thank you.
Any question or comments on this item? All right, if not, A five CPA twenty-two twenty?
Good afternoon Commissioners, if you permit me one moment, I'm gonna share my screen. Are you able to see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. Andrea Papanger with your Planning Commission Staff, this is HC CPA twenty-two dash twenty, one, two, three, nine, eight Bullfrog Creek Road. This is a privately initiated regular map amendment. The site is approximately a hundred and twenty-two point one-eight acres. The request is to go from suburban mixed use six to residential nine. So, the site is in the urban service area and the South Shore area-wide systems, Gibsonton, and Riverview Community Plans. This is an aerial of the su- subject site and the surrounding properties. The site is east of Bullfrog Creek Road and Interstate seventy-five. To the west is the Golden To the west is the Golden Aster Scrub Preservant Trail. And to the north, east, and south are single-family residential properties. The subject site is currently vacant, and there is a seventy-three-point-five acres of a man-made lake on site. The adopted future land use category for the subject site is suburban mixed-use six. Suburban mixed-use six surrounds the site to the north and south. To the east is residential nine. And to the west across Interstate seventy-five is natural preservation. The proposal before you today is to go to the residential nine future land use category. Going to residential nine would increase density on site from seventy, seven-hundred-and-thirty-three units to one-thousand-and-ninety-nine units. It would also increase intensity from approximately one-million-and-three-hundred-thousand square feet to two-point-seven million square feet. If approved, the urban-scale commercial uses would be permitted on site. The suburban-scale commercial, research, corporate park, and light industrial uses would no longer be permitted on site. So that concludes this briefing, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from board members? If not, we'll move to the last item, C P A twenty-two twenty-one.
Yep, that is me again, commissioners. I'll share my screen. Andrea Papanger of Planning Commission Staff. This is H C C P A twenty-two dash twenty-one, two-two-four-four University Square Mall. This is a privately-initiated small-scale map amendment. The site is approximately six-point-six-eight acres. And the request is to go from residential twenty and urban mixed-use twenty to the Innovation Corridor mixed-use thirty-five. So this site is in the urban service area, just north of the city of Tampa boundary. And it's in the University Area Community Plan. So the subject site is north of East Fowler Avenue. It is the existing Burlington Coat Factory, and it is within the University Square Mall. The site is surrounded by the mall, which is mainly light and heavy commercial uses. To the north and west is multifamily. H O A land, group homes, and public institutional land uses. East of the mall, in the northeast quadrant, is single-family residential. And then Long Fowler is mainly light commercial uses as well. So I'll be showing you two adopted future land use maps today. And that is because south of Fowler Avenue is the city of Tampa map. So for this first map, it's only showing on the ledge in the unincorporated county adopted, adopted future land use categories. The subject site is composed of residential twenty and urban mixed-use twenty. And it is surrounded by the Innovation Corridor mixed-use thirty-five. Further north is residential twenty. Northeast is residential six, and Long Fowler Avenue is office commercial twenty. So this is the second adopted future land use map. This shows the city of Tampa. City of Tampa boundary is in a blue outline. It is on Fowler Avenue and runs on Bruce B. Downs Avenue. For the city of Tampa, future land use categories that are adopted, it is commer- community commercial thirty-five along Fowler Avenue. East of Bruce B. Downs is public semi-public and light industrial categories. Further south is residential thirty-five, residential ten, and heavy industrial categories. The proposal before you today is to go to the Innovation Corridor mixed-use thirty-five category. Going to the Innovation Corridor mixed-use thirty-five category would increase density on site from a hundred-and-thirty-three to two-hundred-and-thirty-three units. It would also increase intensity from approximately two-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand square feet to five-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand square feet. And if approved, biomedical research, institutional, and hospital land uses would be permitted on site. But neighborhood commercial uses would no longer be permitted on site. So that concludes this briefing. I'm available for any questions.
Commissioner Wostel?
Chair, I'd just like to point out that I'm extremely happy something's happening with this site. When I first transferred here in two thousand and fifteen, I was told by my base commander, don't go near.
I'm sorry, I lost you.
I can't hear you either.
Oh, I said it's good to see you. I said, thank you.
Good, Commissioner Cohen?
Yeah, I, I just, for the benefit of the new commissioners and also for our own recollection, those of us that were here. Adam, could you just refresh my memory? When they mentioned Burlington Coat Factory, I remembered that about six months ago, we took some action here on this same property. What was that all about? Just so, so we're, because I have a feeling this, this results from that.
Yes, yes, sir, it does. It, so the, the, the mall site, the University Square Mall site has a, a planned development zoning under the University Square Mall category. The Burlington Coat Factory was a separately-owned parcel and was not able to be included in the P D because of that different ownership. The, the, the owners of the mall site have, have acquired the ability to, to obtain that piece and bring it into the mall P D. And the action that the board took earlier was to approve a slight reconfiguration of the front of the, of the structure in order to accommodate the Burlington Coat Factory moving from its location in the back to location in the front. And that allowed the, the former Burlington site to be incorporated into P D and make it a holistic development with all the land included, not, not with that, not the, not having the Burlington piece be a standout.
Thank you for that, because that's what it was. So Burlington Coat Factory apparently does very well on this, and they didn't want to move. But where they were was preventing the mall from going forward with their master plan. So we authorized them to relocate to a different spot on the property. And is, is it my understanding now that what they're coming to us for is to now to finish the development of the old Burlington Coat Factory site, right?
Yes, sir.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Owen?
Yeah, my, my comment's not for this particular piece. But just in general, I, I don't know if commissioners, you're noticing your emails blowing up with all these RES twenty apartment complexes that are wanting to go up. But I sure am getting in the unincorporated part. So I just hope, just in general, just a statement, we're paying attention on where that urban service area line is. And we're very careful about jamming apartments up against it because I'm getting a lot of, a lot of emails regarding a lot of these proposed properties. So just in general, just want to let you all know that's what I'm getting, the feedback from the unincorporated areas. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments for C P A twenty-two twenty-one? If not, I'll apologize for some of the audio challenges that we've had this, this afternoon. I also want to make sure the clerk has recognized that Commissioners Cameron Sepeda, Owen, and, and Myers are, are present. I think they may not have been either here for the roll call or, or could hear, at least with Commissioner Myers' case. So please make sure their recorder is here. And I'll point out that the, the next public hearing on these will be January twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-three. And if there are no other comments, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.